Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting to order and welcome the public who is viewing us virtually. This is the February first regular meeting for the town board in 2021. We are meeting virtually pursuant to the governor's executive order that allows us to do that as a result of the pandemic. As long as we have, we have a way for the public to view or listen to the proceedings in real time. And there he is. And also that the recordings are not only recorded, but then are transcribed and posted on our website. So we hold our meetings via Zoom. We live stream it. This meeting is recorded and will be available. It's usually the first thing that becomes available is the recording and then we will follow that with written minutes on the town's website. So the first thing I would like to do is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is always interesting virtually, but if we could all stand so everybody gets to. And okay, we are good. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. So there is something on a night like this where we're supposed to get a lot of snow to be said for not having to leave your house to attend a meeting. So as much as it has been a real challenge to do virtual meetings, I'm happy for people that they don't have to travel. Stay safe. I'd like a moment of silence tonight. We've lost several members of our community and I just wanted to recognize them and ask for a moment for them. On December 17th, which we did not catch at our January meeting, unfortunately. Dr. Philip Crawl, who I understand was instrumental in the original master plan for the town. He passed away. He was a true citizen of this country if his obituary has anything. I never had the opportunity to know him, but having worked now working on the cell tower issue. His name has come up number, a number of times. So he has passed away. I did mention this, but I on the special meeting, but I also wanted to acknowledge again, the passing of Jill Way. She passed away on January 10th of this year. Our sympathies go out to her and her family or to her family, her husband and her family. Also Carol Newbauer, who lived in Delphi, was passed away on January 15th, a Delphi Falls residence, but lived and was instrumental in many community activities, including teaching school and she was a horse person. She passed away. And then last on January 19th, the town lost Lita Chrysler, who passed away at home with her family. So four very significant town residents who we have lost. So if we could have a moment of silence to acknowledge their passing. I would appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Renee, if I could interrupt one minute, Phil Crawl was also instrumental in the original tower ordinance. Cell towers, he worked very diligently on that and he was a member of the committee and brought brought forth the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Carl. I never knew him.
He was on ECC. I worked with him on ECC in the beginning. Very nice man.
Well, if I, if his credentials are anything, it sounds like he, he was an asset to the town and, and contributed greatly. Shared his knowledge. So
Very smart.
Yeah. I just want to quickly go around the, the group here to make sure we all know who each other is. And then I know it's out of order, but Tom Purcell, I'll let you go first if you would like.
Hello, Tom Purcell, Highway Superintendent for Pampi.
Oh, no, no, no. I mean, after we do the introductions, I'll let you actually go first as far as business.
Oh, I thought we were doing introductions. I'm sorry.
Well, we can, but if you want, I was going to just have people wave to sort of speed it up. So Judy McElhanan is our town councillor, Sheila Larkin is the town councillor and Christmas is the town councillor. Bob Rodriguez is our codes officer. Carl Dennis is our longest standing member of the town councillor, town councillor. Tom Chartrand is our bookkeeper accountant. Tim Frotteski is our town attorney. Nikki Reed is our town. Tom Purcell, Highway Veronica Hoteling is our webmaster and I'm the town supervisor Renee Rotundo. The guests on our panel tonight who will be weighing in as needed. Two of them have been on, were on the January 19th public hearing called Chris Carrick from the Central New York Regional Planning and Development Board. Energy Zar, I guess I'll call you, All Things Energy. And John Shaheen, who was the chair of the committee that the town formed to draft a solar energy systems local law. And then also joining us tonight is Tatiana Parker. She is, and Tatiana, I don't know if your grants, what your title is exactly, but I know that she's with Senator May's office, Rachel May's office, and she's here because we are going to discuss a couple of funding opportunities. One of which is a little bit complicated and I wanted to make sure we had somebody on who could help the board if we needed to have questions. So welcome all of you. Now, Tom Purcell, would you like to go first? So you, if you need to get home and perhaps get ready. I thought you might want to go first and we'll take you out of order.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Up to town, I had a couple of things that are town board to sign, but I'd also, I need to ask the board, I would like your board approval to sign the annual agreement to spend town highway funds, section 284 of the highway law, which Renee Rotundo Supervisor Rotundo needs to sign and all the board members, there are two copies up there. So I need approval for that.
So moved.
I would second that. Is there any discussion on that? Everybody get a chance to read it?
Yes.
See what Tom's going to do this year with his crew?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, Tom, I don't know if I signed both copies. I'm just going to warn you. I might not have realized I had to, there were two there.
Well, I have not signed them either, so I'll check them out.
All right.
The other thing I would like board approval to sign the work permit from Anadog County Water Authority. They want to do some additional eight inch water main. They want, they call it a betterment project on Brickyard Falls Road. Also Renee Supervisor Rotundo needs to sign it and the board members as well. They were up there in the desk as well.
Motion for, motion for eight inch water line to go in on Brickyard Falls Road.
I'll second that.
Okay, Carl made the motion. Sheila seconded it. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And last but not least, I would like board approval, approval to purchase a, under Anadog County contract number, which is on GOV 106-19, a 2021 Ram 3,500 one ton four by four pickup with a plow from the Robert Green Truck Division, which is located in Rock Hill, New York for the sum of $45,933.30.
Just say 45,933, 45?
933 and 30 cents.
Make a motion for approval for a 2021 Ram with plow for 45,933 and 20 cents.
30. Okay, I heard Carl and then I heard Anne second it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Tom Chartrand, do you need to weigh in at the moment because we're a little bit over budget? I think we budgeted 40,000 for that item. I could be wrong, but that's what I'm remembering.
That is true. We had budgeted 40,000 and I have a, on the transfer sheet that I sent you earlier today. We have a transfer from the snow removal contractual into the machinery equipment of $6,000, which will cover the additional plow equipment that goes onto this truck.
So thank you, Tom. So we'll get to that, I guess, when we get to your section, but that, that helps to know what we've, that we've got the money. So any more discussion on that? All those in favor of that purchase? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And Renee, I didn't get all the information that I needed to talk about the water treatment system for the highway department. So
Okay.
Bring that up next month.
Okay. I just want to make sure we get that in place because I know you're concerned about how it affects the boiler.
That is correct. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Well, go to sleep and get up and happy plowing.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Take good care of us.
Be safe, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. So just to refresh everyone's memory, on January 19th, we had a, we started a public hearing on the solar energy systems, local law that's been proposed in draft form. And at the end of that day, that night, we decided to continue the hearing as there were several issues that we wanted to, first of all, revise the local law on, but also because we wanted to give more people an opportunity to weigh in and didn't feel that we were ready to take a vote on this as a board. So I would like to, and Tim, I just need to ask you, do we have to re, make a motion to reopen the hearing or is it considered open?
You should probably say, you should probably reopen the hearing. I mean, it's a continued hearing, so.
Motion to reopen the hearing on solar energy system, local law, public hearing.
Second.
Anne seconded that. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So I would just ask if there are people that would like to be heard that, first of all, if you've already spoken last time. I don't know if that's possible, Veronica, but I'm going to turn the, the hearing over to, the hearing part over to our webmaster Veronica Hoteling. But I would hope that we would give others the opportunity to be heard. So that would be my one, in addition to the other considerations I asked of everyone last time, which is to be respectful of each other's opinions. We're not going to all agree and that's fine that we don't. This is a conversation that we need to have as on what we want as far as solar energy systems in the town. John Shaheen is here, as is Chris Herrick for technical support and Tim can weigh in for legal analysis. So this board is here to hear, is here to hear from you. So Veronica, I would give you control of this hearing and let you take it from here. Oh, yeah. Oh, no, we're good. We did the motion. Okay. Just to explain to people how to do this and and then control the commenting. Well, people can communicate with us via chat or there's a Q and A function in Zoom or they can raise their hands and we can unmute their audio and they can speak through that way. So right now it doesn't look like I have anyone with any questions at the moment. So we'll give it a little. Well, as we wait, I'm wondering if either John or Chris, I know we've worked on revisions to the, the draft. Tim has provided us with a revised draft. It was put on the website. It's there for everyone to see and to look at. It's redlined, so you don't have to try and figure out what was changed. But I wondered if you would like to have some explanation of what has been done since the January 19th version was, was
Yes.
shared. Okay.
Tim, do you want to take care of that?
Sure. The there were some minor changes to the, the local law. Most, some of them were very technical in nature. The, the most significant changes had to do with whether we were going to, there was a provision in there that said that we would allow these in Hamlet Commercial and Residential with an area variance. We like changed that to a use variance. Which are much more difficult to get than an area variance. The whole, the whole premise here is that these types of facilities are not being a residential or a Hamlet Commercial District unless there's some real good reason that it won't have a significant impact. There were changes to where, where ground mounted panels could be in terms of a residential. We have limited that to the rear yards. We have changed the we've removed some language about what sections of law. Again, those are very legal, technical changes that are not are not really, won't change materially the way we operate this local law. And we removed, we removed all the sections that deal with a special permit by the town board. We felt that a special permit by the town board wouldn't be necessary because you, you would have to, the town board's going to have to approve the overlay district itself. So any concerns that the town board may have would come up during that process and then the planning board would consider the tight plan approval. Once the overlay district was approved. I think that's about it. There, there were questions that still exists regarding how, you know, regarding the tier one and tier two systems and how much excess excess energy would be allowed for those types of facilities. And I'll let Chris and I'll let John speak to that issue. I have no, I have no legal issue with, it's really how much we're willing to allow for that. And I think that's pretty much all I have in terms of legal terms of legal changes. Again, nothing material, nothing that would be significant in terms of how this local law would operate.
Yeah, tier one definition, we changed the based on a comment that was made in the first when the public hearing was first opened, how a concern limiting a tier one system, which is roof mounted, building integrated to only produce no more than 110% of what the facility was using within a 12 month period. We thought that over and decided that was a good comment and we eliminated the 110% because essentially the system 25 KW for a residential system or 50 KW for a farming system is self-limiting in and of itself. And when people put solar in as, as indicated by the commenter, they like to plan ahead a bit for what they may be getting as people move more towards electrifying their house. And they want that kind of flexibility. So again, we thought there was a good comment and incorporated that into this latest draft.
I guess for my part, I would say that I think the town, the committee has done a very good job in putting this law together. I've looked at many similar laws across our five county region and you know, this is very comprehensive. I think it goes a long way towards addressing some of the concerns that were raised in the first meeting, particularly regarding visual impact. For example, the screening requirement for vegetative screening for plants capable of growing 25% taller than, than the facility itself within two years. That's one of the more aggressive provisions that I've seen and I think it's very good. So I think a lot of thought's been put into this. I did send some written comments to the board this afternoon. Just a couple of thoughts that I had for some remaining issues, the most important of which is probably the decommissioning issue. As this is one that comes up quite often. What we're seeing is, is towns tending towards including language in their law to specify the methodology by which the value of the decommissioning security should be established. And there's basically two ways to do that, other than taking the developer's word for it. One would be using the Nicerda guidebook, which has established a rate of about $50,000 per megawatt installed with a 2% annual escalator. Or having a third party engineer write a report to, to verify the amount of the salvage value and the decommissioning of value.
I think that's a better idea, in my personal opinion.
Yeah, I think that's probably the safer way to go. Of course, the developer would pay for that report as part of their applications. There would be no, no cost to the town.
Yep.
And the best practice we're seeing is to have that report updated periodically, maybe every three to five years. So I would recommend the town board consider adding that language.
Can I just check with the town board members? Did you all get the email? I didn't see it until late, but I did see it and I did read it.
A lot of great ideas. Thank you.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And I, I just really, really thank Chris for sticking with this, this project. It's, it's very, very helpful to have somebody with your level of knowledge of this topic involved because it gives us some assurances that for those of us that, whose, our, our worlds are not wrapped around solar, so we don't know it that well, but need to make some decisions that, for the, the good of the town. Um, it's very, I really appreciate it. I think I speak to the board when I say that, but it's very appreciated. Appreciate your time.
My pleasure.
I do have a question about the pilot in agreement that you've mentioned going through, instead of having the, the town incur legal expenses to with respect to setting up a pilot agreement that the, is it county IDA, industrial development?
Yes.
They can do that. I mean, so, but what does that, what are the pluses and minuses of that? I'm just curious.
So the, the pluses for the town is, is not having the headache or the expense frankly of negotiating a pilot agreement, which would be something new, I imagine, for the town board as it is for most town boards. The IDA obviously has professional staff. They've, they've negotiated several of these pilot agreements for solar already over the last 12 to 18 months. So they're quite familiar with it. And the developer actually pays a fee to the IDA to negotiate the pilot agreement. So while some developers would, may prefer actually to negotiate with the town, so as not to pay the IDA a fee. We always recommend to developers, if you're, if you care about time, and of course they do, it's probably in your interest to pay the fee and just go through the IDA process. It'll be quicker and less painless for everybody. In the end, you know, the amount of revenue that would come to the town probably wouldn't vary that significantly. Because there's only so much negotiation room to be had in these kinds of pilot agreements. And so I do talk to some town boards who think they can drive a better deal with these developers, but in the end you end up killing the goose that laid the golden egg and the deal can die. So I would just put that out there as something the town board might want to consider.
And it might, I mean, I don't know where Tim is on these pilots or town attorney, but it might end up costing us with legal fees if we have to incur those in order to get somebody on board.
Probably not.
Oh.
You, you pay me, you pay me an that amount of money and as Chris said, as Chris said, there's really not a lot of negotiation with, with, with the companies. They provide you with a basic pilot a pilot contract. And there's only so much that they will, there's only so much they'll bend in terms of how much they'll pay for this because it, it, it comes down to a business decision for them ultimately. And if they can't afford to pay the taxes on it, they're not going to enter into that pilot agreement. Chris, does the IDA, will they automatically take these? That, that was my question. I don't know. Town says, we don't want to do this, we'll let the IDA do it. Will they always do that?
Yes.
Okay. Cause that's why, it would be fine with me, by the way, for the IDA to do it. I don't, I've done a couple of them and the, again, the negotiations are much of a negotiation. It is, this is what we can, this is what we have and it's usually based on you know, how much per, per megawatt that they're going to be that they're going to be providing and your, your payment is going to be a third of the county, you know, the county gets, a county gets it. The school district gets it. The town gets it and you're going to get your pro-rata share, which is probably around 15% of that cost or that, that payment. I, my, my, the rule of thumb has been about $5,000 per megawatt. Isn't, is that right, Chris?
Yeah, I think we're trending a little bit downwards from that. I mean, we, we recommend somewhere between 3,500 and 5,000.
Yeah, so it's
Not a lot.
The town's share of that is, you know, less than a thousand dollars typically per megawatt per year.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I, well, I agree with Chris on the commissioning plan will, will, will amend the law to accomplish what he's talking about. And Sheila, you'd prefer going with the engineering report, a third party engineering report to determine?
I think it's wise. Yeah.
As opposed to the, because the other option would be using.
Yeah.
What's that?
I feel like it would be a guessing game if you go by the solar guidebook.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
What's your, what's your opinion on the solar guidebook, Chris?
I think it's good. I mean, it is a couple of years old at this point. But I don't think that costs have fluctuated that greatly since that was published. So I mean, it works out to a little less than $50,000 if the town were to save $50,000 per megawatt. I don't think developers would blink at that. And you would have the 2% escalator in there to account for inflation. So you're probably safe that way, but I think it's more conservative to do.
Okay, we can capture that in the local law and we'll, we'll amend it.
I have some questions of my own for Chris, but I would like to go back to Veronica to see if we've got any. I would like the public to weigh in.
Yeah, there's some questions that have come in since the discussion started. Mary Baum from 3405 Suite Road, is this going to be voted on tonight? She asks.
No.
Oh.
Tim just said we have to rework some language anyway. So no, it would not be voted on. There is, and just, we're still absorbing this ourselves. So no.
Okay. And Mary has a follow-up to that. Would the board consider changing the setback? And Mary has a follow up to that. Would the board consider changing the setbacks to more than 100 feet, for example, 500 feet? Or I think she meant more than 100 feet, yeah, 500 feet.
Is she talking about which setbacks? The the front setback, the on the roadway that abuts the road or all setback?
I'm assuming.
John and Chris, I think you could probably respond to that.
Front and adjacent.
Realistically, is that, could that work to to get have that much of a setback?
I'll defer to Chris to comment on that, but I sense. Based on what I know, I would say that's excessive. 500 excessive.
I would agree. Most community, most local laws that I've seen have been at 100 feet. There is, in the Hamlet District, if there were to be a special use permit granted, it is set at 200 feet. So board should consider that. Also of note is that the state in its new Article 94C guidelines for the very large utility scale projects. Has set in its template guidance for local communities has set the setback provision at 100 feet.
Stan Gorman, please explain part 13 taxation, how it works for tier three.
Oh, I think we, I think we kind of went through that. As I explained last meeting, the. There is a provision where you can opt, right now, it's fully tax exempt for a fuller farm, for a. For the increased costs of building a solar farm on a vacant lot would be all the costs. But even for the home or for for your home, or if you're ground mounted, it would be the increased costs would be exempt from taxation. That's what the state says. You can opt out of that exemption, which the town of Pompey has not done. So the exemption still exists. The one requirement for tier three facilities is that it enter into a pilot agreement with the municipality. And that's what we were talking about earlier.
Sean Stacer asks, what will the town do to guarantee that wells are safe if one breaks? And water runoff, the panels contain cadmium and lead?
Chris, can you address that?
So first thing is that most, vast majority of these. Solar panels do not contain cadmium. There is a subset of panels that do, but those are not very popular at all, so most are silicon based, which is an inert material. But as was mentioned in the first public meeting, every project will have to have a SWIP or a stormwater pollution prevention project. Because of this disturbance of acreage that's involved with these kinds of projects. So that will be a standard part of the review of any of these projects. As well as secret.
So is it possible, I just, this is just a question, I. That you, we could say we do not allow cadmium panels in the town of Pompey? Is that, does anybody do that?
I guess you can, but but the. You have to understand that even after the town approves the overlay district, it's going to have to go through a site plan process. And during that site plan process, all of those issues will come up, especially as it relates to environmental. Concerns through the seeker process, so there's going to be an entire environmental review of whatever project comes before the board. I I. I don't know that. Prohibiting cadmium solar panels. Is. Is, I'm going to have to think about that, but I don't know that that, you could, you could try, but. I don't know if that's going to in some way discriminate against one company over another, but I don't think that that, I don't think that, I don't think that would be an issue.
I think also. Solar panels on my home, I literally climb and crawl on them. So I think it's pretty, first of all, it's pretty difficult to break these. Maybe if somebody was throwing rocks at them or hammering on them with a hammer. And secondly, and Chris corrected, I'm wrong, but the matrix that contains. Those elements, the name of the panels, I think it's pretty difficult to get any kind of statistically significant amount of those materials to. Actually wash out into water and and then, you know, going into the ground.
That's true. I mean, the the issues associated with toxicity of cadmium really have more to do with the production of these materials. In the manufacturing facility, particularly the disposal of water, which is, there's a lot of water used in making these panels. But really, you would have to grind up all of the whole solar field. Assemble it all and try to leach out the cadmium in order for there to be any environmental disturbance.
So just to reassure the the person who asked the question, is it your opinion that this is a very minor risk? If very, very minimal, unlikely? I don't know what word to use, but.
I would categorize it as extremely unlikely.
Okay.
Renee, there's a follow up question about the setback from Mary Baum. Do. Do you want?
Well, are there others that are other questions coming or is?
Not at the moment.
Okay, though, then that's fine.
She asked, what harm would it do to increase the setbacks? It would be less visible from the road and further away from adjacent properties.
Well, for for me. The more, the larger the setbacks, the smaller the area that a developer would have to provide the kind of. Energy, renewable energy that it would need to make it make it profitable. So I think the the larger the setback areas, it's going to reduce the the the. The ability to make these economical for purposes of providing renewable energy. I mean, if we have, we have always determined, we've always determined setbacks based on reasonable standards. And. Taking up 500 of a square area all the way around would be a significant prohibition for purposes of setbacks.
Can that be legally challenged if it was, if it was considered restrictive? That fact that's completely like beyond what anybody else is doing, like the 100 feet seems to be standard.
Yeah.
Is that challengeable? Just wanting to know, because I don't want to be sued.
Yeah, well. Can it be challengeable? Essentially, what you're doing is prohibiting people from using their their full property. And that could be considered a taking under certain provisions of the constitution, so there's, can any, can we be sued? Sure, everybody can be sued.
Yeah, and don't give them any ideas, Tim.
We have a good lawyer.
I would just say, from a planning point of view, the other issue that comes into play is the lot coverage threshold, which is 50%. So it's a combination, it's the lot coverage ratio of 50%.
Yeah.
So those two factors affect the geometry of the project when the developer is laying it out. But the town board should remember that you have site plan approval and you can negotiate and work with the developer. And most developers are more than happy to accommodate reasonable requests in order to get their project permitted.
I would point out too that as an example, Lafayette's law has a front setback of 50 feet. So for solar farms, so we doubled with Lafayette's law.
And the other point, as I mentioned, is the screening requirement, which is very aggressive. And I think will go a long way towards allaying the concerns of of neighbors.
And I just want to remind the public that the solar handbook that you're mentioning, there's a link to it on our town website. So folks can go look at what, and it's very comprehensive. So it covers just about every topic that is included in this solar, in this proposed law. So if you wanted to educate yourself on all things solar with municipalities, that would be looking to know. Anything else, Veronica? Anybody else?
Stan Gorman asks, are there any current applications for any solar projects right now?
No, because we don't have a law.
Yeah.
They can't apply.
That's what he thought.
Yeah.
Well, we've had an interest expressed.
Yes.
All right.
I will say, can I, I just have a couple of questions, Tim. I know you're not going to, you'd be happy with me to ask questions, but. But I wanted to ask Chris a couple of questions. Well, one thing, I have to say, after the last hearing. I did some of my own homework and looked up studies on the effect of or the impact on property value from a. Tier three solar farm. The only study I could find said that it doesn't, it does not decrease the value. And in fact, there are times where it actually enhances property values. But it doesn't look like there are a lot of studies out there, if I'm correct.
That's true. This is still a relatively new field, especially in New York. So the study I'm aware of is sponsored by the Department of Energy, US Department of Energy. I don't know if that's the same one you may have looked at, but.
Yeah.
You know, these are, the one that I'm referring to is a fairly substantive study, longitudinal study over many years. With, you know, control groups holding other factors constant, so. You know, it's not the most robust data set that could exist, but the initial results seem to indicate that.
One other question about hosting capacity. In John's presentation, he had put up a map of our town with the roads that have. Is it three phase connectivity?
Yes.
And for the public, if you want to know what's, whatever road has three phase, just look for the, for three things across the top of the utility pole, is that correct?
That's right.
Yes.
Three phase, so. Very simple, but. I'm having a hard time figuring out what the colors mean on the hosting capacity. Because. It, I was under the impression if it's red or some color that has low capacity, that that meant that. That that I thought it meant that it's not viable for that area, but I'm understanding that might not be the case. So I wondered if you could just explain a little bit better what the hosting capacity on the roads, the the areas that do have three phase, what it actually means.
So so the posting capacity map is a great starting point to take a look at a fairly high level. And these are the snapshots in time, because the utility updates them roughly every month or so. Of what the infrastructure looks like in your community and what the developer activity has been to date in the community. The challenge is that you need to take sort of a second step, which is look at the queue of projects that have been proposed to the utility. To get a little more detail into where these projects may or may not stand, or how viable they may or may not be. So John and I did that this afternoon. We were looking through the spreadsheet of National Grid's queue of projects that have been proposed. And that, that list is changing all of the time as well, as projects prove to be viable or not. So there's a fairly lengthy process. If a developer is interested, they apply to National Grid for an engineering study. That's the only thing that tells them for sure whether or not their project is viable. And there's a 90 day business day period that the utility has to perform that engineering report, and it occurs in several stages. What I'm seeing, particularly in relation to the project on Sweet Road that was discussed earlier. Is that there are several projects in the queue ahead of that developer that are interested in connecting to the same substation. So it's a matter of looking at the feeder line, but also looking at the substation to which it connects. And we need to remember that any substation has multiple feeder lines. So you may be okay on the feeder, but not okay on the substation or vice versa. In this case, it looks again like three projects at that substation in queue. It's unclear to me, based on the data available, whether those developers have paid their full. Interconnection fee to the utility or not, because that report is dated in December.
So there's a race sometimes with getting these things.
There absolutely is a race, and it is also possible for a developer to cost share the fee. To improve the substation or in some cases up, improve the feeder line. So a developer, you know, can say, well, National Grid wants $1 million to improve that substation. You pay 500,000, I'll pay 500,000, and both of our projects might be viable. But again, none of that is set in stone until you have that full engineering report.
Well, thank you for that, Chris, because that has been the burning question that I have had. In many conversations since the public hearing with John about what this hosting capacity map really means. Because it didn't seem to mean what I originally thought it meant, so that's very helpful. And last question, which I think will be quick. Could you please explain to people what it means to subscribe to a solar farm? Because that came up last meeting and I don't, I want clarification, because they, people could. Choose to wait and subscribe to a project in the town of Pompey that would then be their source for credit.
That's correct.
Credit, correct?
That's correct. So traditionally, you know, to to use solar power, you had to install panels on your roof, like John has done. And and that market was growing very robustly for for a number of years. But the issue is that more than half of the residents of any community can't do that for whatever reason. They have a shady roof or they don't have the money upfront to pay for the panels, whatever. And so that's why community solar exists, is to open up the market for solar to every New Yorker. And to, through the state policy of of community solar, that's what subscription means. And by becoming a subscriber to a community solar array, you agree to buy a certain amount of power produced by that array. In effect, you're actually buying utility bill credits that appear on your bill. So the power gets exported to the grid, as we explained in the last meeting, the electrons go to wherever they're demanded in the community. But there's a meter at the utility pole that measures how much power is generated and the. Developer says to National Grid, give 1,000 kilowatt hours to John and 1,000 kilowatt hours to Renee and 1,000 kilowatt hours to Tatiana and so forth. And then the utility allocates those bill credits on our respective utility bills, and that's how we save money.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that people understood as well that that the power can technically stay in Pompey. But you have to subscribe to that solar farm.
That's right, and our agency is working with a number of municipalities to build community. to build community solar farms on property they own, like closed landfills. And as a matter of practice, we're going to open the subscription pool first to residents of the community for a certain period of time, so that they can enjoy that local benefit.
I'd like to mention too, we did, just so the residents that are participating tonight realize, we did look at the potential to put a solar array on our landfill down on number two road, or number four road, but it's several miles from the nearest three-phase power. So it just, from an infrastructure standpoint, it's just not viable. It's just not a viable location. But the idea there was, we could, it's a site that is not being used for anything else. It's owned by the town. It could potentially benefit the town's residents, but again, it just wasn't viable at this point, with the infrastructure that's employed.
I do remember that, John. Does anybody else on the board before we move on? I'll ask Veronica one more time if there's anything else, but does anybody on the board have a question?
No. Very good job, you guys.
Yeah. Veronica, anything else?
Yeah, there's a couple. Jennifer Granza wants to know, what about questions submitted to the supervisor in writing prior to the original?
Oh, I forgot about hers.
Year-end date. Will they at least become part of the record?
Yes, they will. And Jennifer, my apologies, her question had to do with, let me find it. My bad. Here she is. And I think I shared this question with our town attorney. She was concerned about the decommissioning. Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the, she sent me an email on January 18th. She wanted to know about the proposed law, contemplate that the will be required to post a bond to cover the cost of decommissioning, removal, and site restoration. And then she said something about the initial issue is whether or not the town of Pompey has municipal home rule authority to require this bond, since it is not a public improvement. The solar system is wholly unlike roads, water, and sanitary sewer infrastructure installed by developers in connection with subdivision and site plan approval, where bonds are authorized, as part one of a three-part issue, three-part concern, but I, and then she wanted to know if the town lacks authority. What happens when the developer decommissions or abandons the site without removal and restoration? What's in place to ensure it's done? Who pays? And then she referenced paragraph 6C1 of the proposed law that states that the decommissioning amount shall be reduced by the amount of the estimated salvage value. And she said, well, maybe that is, well, maybe this is unlikely, is it is still possible that a developer could construct, and then shortly thereafter, decommission and claim that the salvage value is equal to decommissioning amount, and leave $0 to cover the expense. So I don't know if anybody wants to tackle any of that, but if you have a response to any of that, I think, Tim, I don't know, I thought I shared this with you.
Yeah, I'll defer to Tim on these.
Oh, let me see, I'll answer the-
The home rule was the first one.
Yeah, the, I'll answer the last question first, which is the salvage value. We took that out, based on, we agree that there's no, there's, there's no, we will not reduce it by the salvage value. So that's been removed from the local law. Do we have home rule authority to request a bond? Yes, I believe we do. It is a very, I think it's, I have, but I think it's actually part of the state law, but even if it's not part of the state law, the town has the right under the, under Home Rule Law 23 to pass local laws that, that will, that will manage how it operates the town. And I think that this is one of those things that we can require for, for, for decommissioning. We do it with health hours, we do it with solar farms. So I, I am confident that we can require a bond. And if that bond is in place, and could be in place, there would be no, there would be no, we would have that available to us if they abandoned the site. So it wouldn't get approved without that bond.
And she did at the time, I don't know if she still, with the answers to these questions, feels the same way, but she did say she respectfully wanted to go on the record as being opposed to the law, as it was currently drafted, believing that the benefits to the town in the terms of reduced power cost or short-term jobs didn't outweigh the cost in terms of visual blight, reduced property value, and cost burden. So, and I do apologize, Jennifer, I'm glad you're on, because it would have been part of the record, but I would have forgotten to read it. And actually, I should say, where does Jennifer live? I don't know. I thought it was on. Okay. Oh, thank you. Veronica, I'll go back to you.
Elizabeth and Tony Madonna Coleman Hill Road slash Route 91. What roads in the area have three-phase power?
Veronica, you know how I asked you to have that?
Is that the map?
That's that slide. It's also available if you go to National, if you Google, is it National Grid Hosting Capacity? You can find it easily. You can look it up yourself. I shouldn't say find it easily, because I think you have to set up an, is it, do you have to set up an account?
You have to go through a registration.
Yeah, but we have the PowerPoint presentation, I do believe, on the website, and that's part of the PowerPoint presentation. One of the slides has the map that shows the various hosting capacities for the town, the roads. But John, if you want to jump in, go ahead.
Yeah, it's also on the fact sheet that I put together that's on the website as well.
Anything else?
Just a follow-up from Mary Baum, and I think that's it.
Okay.
Her comment is, residents should be aware that solar credits only equate to approximately $60 a year off your utility bill, and she references an article published on Syracuse.com.
Mine is $71, so Mary's not out of the ballpark. But I haven't signed up for it yet, but that's what I've been given. So Chris, I don't know if you've got anything else to say about that, but?
Well, I just want to point out that that figure was a representative figure that the author of the article used for, quote, typical customer. But really, the standard practice is a 10% savings off your utility bill. So my bill is like more $100 a month, so I would say $120 a year, roughly. But the difference, the way that you save as a subscriber is the difference in the value of your bill credits that I would describe earlier, and what you pay to the developer for the privilege of getting those bill credits. I often describe it like a Groupon discount, where you pay $20 to get a $40 gift certificate to a restaurant. It's that same principle.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. So I guess I want to ask, and anyone else who wants to weigh in? And Tatiana, I really appreciate you hanging in here. What we should do. I know Tim's going to make some changes. I have some structural things. I'd like to move some provisions around in that, but I've talked to John and Tim about it, but like, I think the ECC section should be back in with the procedure, not at the end of the document. I think it's out of place. So I was thinking, but there's some other things that need to be done too. So, board members, do we keep this hearing open? Do we?
Continuation of the public hearing.
Yes, Carl?
Yes.
Continuation.
Going to keep working on this.
Right.
I agree.
Okay.
Sure, yeah.
That's good to me, and.
Make motion for continuance at the March meeting of the public hearing.
Judy, get all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. So now we're going on to, I do believe, so Tatiana doesn't have to stay on the call. We've been talking with Senator May's office about applying for a SAM grant. And Tatiana, if you would, you can unmute if you want. I just, what does SAM stand for? I know at one time, but I don't have it in front of me.
State, M, and municipal.
Thank you. So I worked with Tom Purcell, our highway superintendent, because much of the available funding relates to the type of costs that he incurs. We came up with a list of, of a variety of items, and we've sort of narrowed it down. And Tatiana, since I've even talked to you, I met with my highway super again, and with our accountant, bookkeeper, Tom Chartran, to go over, again, given the the concept, the way this works. And so this is what really needs to be understood and shared with the town board, because ultimately, we have to decide if you want to authorize me to apply for this money. And when I say this money, they're offering us $400,000. So it's a significant amount of money. The drawback is, it doesn't come for several years. Given the, the current financial, and everything has slowed down. I guess all the cogs in the work are, are really moving slowly. So there is a whole process that typically normally would take about 18 to 24 months. Takes a lot longer now. Well, maybe not, but you have to anticipate that it does. And if you ask Tom Chartran, he would say it definitely does. Yes. But in any event, given the length of time it would take for us to get the money, we've been trying to work to figure out what we would apply for, to, what use we would apply for, for that money. And the catch here, the difficulty for our town, our particular situation, is we have no reserve. We have no money in, in reserve. And this is a reimbursement, this is reimbursement funding. So we need, once we get, we, so let's say, three years down the road, we get the state approval. We can sign the contract. We can now purchase, because you don't purchase until you get the assurance that we get, Tatiana's been very clear about that. You don't purchase until you get the money. But we would have to front the money. And this town does not have $400,000 sitting around. It doesn't even have $50,000 in reserve, but we could bond for it, or we could, there are, there are ways. And this would be something we would talk to Tim about when the time came. But there are several questions that have come up as a result, Tatiana, of my conversations with Tom Purcell and Tom Chartran this past week. And I think that if we got answers to some of those, and I want the board to understand what we're talking about, we might be in a better position for them to decide with me whether or not to authorize me to apply for the money. It's, the authorization is just to apply, but we need to understand some of the, a couple more things. And Tom, I know you, you had the list. So.
So the first item we discussed was the local share. When does the town have to set the local share aside and not be using that to have that funding available? Is it immediately, or when we get authorization to spend?
When you get authorization to spend, when you complete the two-page application, there is a section that outlines your budget, and you can write in there, or even include a narrative that says, this is the project we're going to do. This is how we're going to raise the 400,000, you know, just so DASNY and Senate Finance is on the same page with what you intend to do.
And the other important question was, what if the piece of equipment that we put into this grant breaks down, and we need, need it replaced? And let's say we still haven't got authorization, and we need to have that piece of equipment in place? What happens to the grant funding if we have to purchase it on our own?
No matter the project, I strongly suggest that nothing is purchased before you have a grant dispersal agreement. There have been grantees who have, once the project is activated with the dormitory authority, meaning that it's passed my check, it's passed Senate Finance, and now it's with DASNY to undergo its concurrent reviews, they will activate your project and give it a project ID number. There are some grantees in the past who have begun to spend during that time. For my tenure in our member office, I do not suggest that, because anything can happen during your review. And you don't want to be out of that money.
There's no guarantee, basically.
I'm sorry?
Is there, is it 100% guaranteed?
That's a difficult question. Are the money, that 400,000, our member office has it for you guys. The thing that would hold that money up is, let's say, your environmental review, if there is, if there's issues with your environmental review. Those are things that you will talk to DASNY. If DASNY has questions about your finances, that is all stuff that will work, you would talk to the dormitory authority about. Once again, that's why I say, don't spend anything, because that process with DASNY is really the longest process in this whole thing. And I've seen people go back and forth with their reviews, trying to get things fixed, and it just elongates the timeframe. So the money is guaranteed. It's about how you address the questions that DASNY has, and how long that is going to take.
So can you apply and get accepted, and then could we bond after?
Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. First question.
I think the concern we had when we were in our discussion was that if the piece of equipment was to break down, and we were two or three years still from making it through the DASNY approval process, can we substitute a different piece of equipment and purchase the one that we absolutely need to keep our town active and operating?
So you're saying that you, through the process, what you have right now breaks down, and you have an immediate need to purchase something to stand in its place before your funding comes through, correct?
Or could we substitute another piece of equipment in place of that one that we need further down the road?
You could, you could definitely repurpose your grant to do, to purchase something else. So let's say, for sake of this conversation, you need a water heater, okay? The water heater you have goes, you need to immediately replace the water heater, so your town buys one, okay? So now we know that project is not going to really qualify, because you've purchased it already. That application that's working its way through the pipeline, we can say, stop, we already have a water heater. Let's- Let's repurpose that money for another project that we want to do. Does that answer your question?
I think that's what, what the highway superintendent was most concerned about, yes.
Absolutely. You can always change the scope of the project.
Okay. Those were the ones I had down on my list, Renee.
Yes, and, and my, my internet dropped me, but I'm back. And so I didn't hear the, the first part, but that's a good answer, Tatiana. I like your answer. The only question I had, and I don't know if you asked it, Tom, we wondered if, and I don't think it does, because it's equipment. There are no MWBE requirements with this, correct?
No, not that I know of, but I can definitely ask, but I haven't seen any MWBE requirements, but I can.
Yeah, for those who don't know what that stands for, it's Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise. And with some grants of money from the state, they require what, they require you to spend a certain percentage with those vendors of your non, of your discretionary spending. But this is these, these items typically don't apply. I, I know it, because I have a grant program I run. They don't apply to equipment typically. So I think I wanted to make sure, though, because it did come up in our discussions.
I'll definitely check on that and circle back.
Okay. So for the board, I just want you to know that I, I really appreciate Tom Chartrand's perspective on things, because he's conservative, and he pulls me back from the edge if I'm but um, but I also think I pull him out a little bit. We talked about this the other day. I think we both have come to the, and I would rather have Tom speak to this himself, what the conclusion was that we sort of came to about applying for this.
Yeah, we were originally thinking about applying for a truck, a snow fighting truck, and the loader that we normally replace every year. The loader is an everyday piece of equipment. Snow plow will be an every winter day piece of equipment. And we're thinking about, instead of doing two pieces of equipment, using the Greatall, which is that very large boom ditch cleaning, roadside mowing. It's during the summer, it's always on the run. But it's a piece of equipment that we might be able to rent if, you know, something, if this one was to break down, we could probably rent one for a couple of months and just not get as much work done. If the backhoe was to break down, we would have to replace it. If the snow plow breaks down, we would have to replace it. The Greatall would be something that's not an everyday absolute necessity. But it's something that we're well past our normal replacement schedule on by. I'd say three or four, maybe five years. Tom would better address that.
Five years easily.
So um, I think our conclusion was that it makes no sense not to apply for this. As long as the questions that we had got answered in a fashion that where we didn't have to prove that we were gonna buy, we didn't have to get a commitment to bond right upfront, like now. We need, and we don't have savings. We, we intend to try and progress with that and, and come up with some over the next several years. But it's, there really is a very limited amount we have to be able to use for covering the upfront cost before we get reimbursed. So.
We, we've got two avenues we can go. Rent something in the meantime, and her answer about, you know, you can buy something else, put it in flooded funds when it was an emergency to go get that Greatall or something, not Greatall, but the payloader. And that, so we're good to go, those two answers.
Yeah, and the cost of bonding, there's obviously a cost associated with it, but if the allows us to reap $400,000 worth of funding for very, very much-needed equipment. I, you know, I, I think that's what you gotta weigh. So I guess I'm wondering, is the board feel like they're in a position to authorize me to apply? It's just to apply?
I authorize, yes, for it.
First, it's for it's for a SAM.
SAM.
SAM grant.
Grant.
I should say. It's a, so.
Seconded.
Seconded. Does any, is there any other discussion from this, from the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Tatiana, I will have that application to you this week.
Sounds great. If you always have any questions, I'm, I'm, I'm here to help, okay?
Thank you. Really appreciate it so far. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. So Tom Chartrand. You gotta turn, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. So I guess we should probably start with the end of the year report. I didn't know if you wanted me to go page by page, big picture. It's kind of hard to do page by page here unless everybody's got it in front of them. So so on the highlight pages, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll just give you the highlights. So the general fund, we came in under budget on several line items that really helped us this year. We had put some funding in towards the getting the garage roof and the salt shed roof repaired. Those funds did not get spent. Another big item was the fact that we couldn't run our swim program. That saved us $30,000 on the expenditure side. And of course, we did forfeit, forfeit about $9,000 on the revenue side. So that item alone saved us over 20,000. Our workers' comp, when we went through that program and got that, got changed over to the other company, saved us about $23,000 on that one line item. And the other really large item that helped us on the spending side was changing the zoning from a salary to an hourly position. Saved us about $18,000 over what we had originally budgeted. So those line items really helped us a lot. On the revenue side for the general fund, of course, I already mentioned, we were under budget on the rec, and we were under budget on court binds as well, due to the court being shut down. But we had an amazing second payment from our mortgage tax from the state and county. Put us a $100,000 over budget. And most of that was due to the refinancing going on with the lower mortgage rates. Not something that'll probably happen again, but it, it was a great thing for us. So that was about it on that. On the the highway fund, we were, we were under a bit on the spending on the payrolls during the winter. We didn't have as severe of a winter as we had originally budgeted for, so we had some pretty good savings there. And also on we didn't purchase the new truck as of the end of last year. So we rolled the $100,000 forward for that as well. So we ended up in pretty good shape on that. So overall, in the real big picture of things, let me grab my big picture page here. General fund, we ended up with an unappropriated fund balance. In other words, money that's not spoken for at the end of 2020, $426,000. Now, when we did set the budget up, we appropriated 123,000 of that to reduce taxes. So after that happened, we have 303,000 approximately sitting in the unappropriated fund balance for the general fund. Now, if we were to use a similar number to the 123,000 when we get to the 2022 budget, which would give everything else kind of an even keel for us when we get into budgeting. In other words, if your unexpendited fund balances even year to year, all of your changes are represented either by increased revenue or decreased revenue, increased spending, or decreased spending. Gives you an accurate picture of where you're going up and down on your real budget. That would leave us with a surplus of 180,000 unspoken for. Now, we do have a few items that are probably gonna speak for that. The salt shed roof project and the garage roof project are probably gonna need more than the 20,000 that we put in the budget as feeder money for those. And the other item was the heating system for the town hall. We put 20,000 towards the replacement of those three furnaces with possibly a ground source or an air source heat pump system. So 20,000 is kind of a starter fee for that. So we'll probably need to use some of that 180,000 to get that projects running. Renee did tell me today that we received the JCAP grant, but many of the projects that we'd hoped for to get covered by that aren't covered. So I think we're gonna have some, some areas of concern there as well to use some of that 180,000. But I, I would suspect there's gonna be a significant chunk of that available to put into a reserve for either future repairs, or there may be other projects coming up that we need to address. But we should definitely set that money aside for one-time projects, not roll it back to reduce taxes next year, because instead of coming up, having 123, we'd have, you know, almost 300,000. Where do we come up with that in the following year? It's more than our budget. So wouldn't be a good idea to immediately dump it back into reducing taxes. On the highway fund, not quite as spectacular, but a, a similar idea. We ended up the end of the year with about 334,000, almost 335,000. We used 173,000 to reduce taxes. Now, of that, 100,000 was a roll forward of what we didn't, when we didn't order the truck. So we actually had about 73, almost 74,000 that we used to reduce taxes out of real numbers. 100,000, we rolled forward, really isn't part of the surplus that we had. So if we were to use that same approximately 74,000, we'd have a unappropriated fund balance left of about 86,000. And that one would be a definite, let's get it into the reserve for new equipment, because we're gonna have a large local share coming due on the the Greatall potentially, that we're gonna have to prove that we have some money there set aside, and also with the loader that we're not submitting for the grant, and we also have a truck that we were gonna submit for the grant. Those are two items we're gonna have to fund locally in place of the Greatall. So I think this is kind of one of those mullet over things. We don't need to make immediate decisions on this. But I don't think these should be ongoing funds that we would expect to have. These are one-time, one-shot type things that most likely aren't gonna happen again. Already this winter, Tom's up on his overtime compared to the previous year. Even though it's not a severe snow winter, there's a lot of little snows that are getting the guys out for a lot of overtime. So that's a a concern that we probably won't have that extra, I think it was about 40, 45,000 that we had left in those payroll lines. So that is the big picture on the end of 2020 budget. We ended up in very good shape. We have some hard decisions to make towards making sure that we don't you know, set ourselves up for failure in the future. But let's get some of these projects that have, have to be done, done. Would be my what I would recommend. So now it's up to you guys to think about that and decide which projects are important.
Tom, you know, the breakout you, you, the other day, would you be able, now my internet connection is unstable. I might lose you guys again. Would you be able to share that with the board? I think it's a visual.
Yep. Yeah, I'll have to find it up. Mine has all kinds of handwriting all over it.
Yeah, so does mine.
But I will.
Maybe Tom didn't write on his.
No, I, I think I kept it. It's probably on the database someplace, so I'll find it and mail it to the board later tonight.
And I just have one question, because I'd like to mull this over while, I mean, what I'm thinking about, I know the answer. It is not a good idea, you're saying, to get off track with what we're typically rolling forward for offsetting taxes. It would be for 2022.
Correct.
So that's not a good idea to increase it by much, or increase it at all?
We probably, the 123 was actually a little bit more than we've had in previous years to roll forward. We've been a lot tighter than that on some of these line items. And we, since we went from, we had 166 at the beginning of 2020, to end up with 426 at the end of the year was pretty amazing. But 166 is more in line with what we usually have left over. So that really only gives us about a $40,000 cushion.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that. And and I, I'm sure there'll be questions about how come, we, we did not know this at budget time.
No, we had no idea that we were gonna
No idea.
Feed our mortgage tax. In fact, all of the state stuff was told, we're gonna be cut to 80% of our budgeted items. Now, we did get some cuts in the highway for the CHIPS program and those type of things. That's why it's, you know, it's kind of a, not as drastic of an increase, but we got our full shot on our AIM money, the state revenue sharing. So we, I just totally surprised, and especially the mortgage tax. Who would have known that so many people would have refied in this one year?
And we did.
We're like over twice what we got the previous year.
I, and we did save in a lot of ways this year, this past, intentionally saved. Intentionally looked for ways to, like, be more responsible, accountable for the money we take in from the town. So everybody, we need to think about this. How we want to allocate these funds. There has been a long, a long time here had the funds to upgrade things that need upgrading. I do think, and Tom Chartrand, you some of, I'm, I'm hoping some of the green infrastructure funding that's through the sewer consolidation lease, might be able to pick up some of the charge, the, the, like, the heat pumps and things like that, that we did not, that we that we have started funds for, but don't have the full amounts for. So I'm hoping we'll find other ways going forward as well to offset or to increase our revenues without necessarily putting it on the property owners in the town. So good work. You are you are worth your.
Before, if the board didn't make decisions to go out and look for things like the workers' comp and you know, we didn't change the way we were doing things in some of the other areas. I mean, the other thing is, is that swim program hopefully is gonna go off this year. So
Yes.
You know, there's, that's a $20,000 differential that won't be there the next time. So I mean, I'm praying that the swim program goes off. I want kids to learn how to swim.
Right. Yeah, and we would not want it to go two years without. That would be, it's bad enough one year.
Yep.
So. All right.
The next item you had, well, um, unallocated bond, we went over that. Bank reconciliations were up there. How did we feel about those when we looked at them? Do we want to make a motion to approve those?
Motion, Carl?
Yeah, make a motion to accept the bank reconciliation to the town supervisor.
And the clerk?
And the tax and town clerk.
Tax on the town clerk also.
Seconded. And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, the next item was payment of bills. And of course, soon as I walked in the door from dropping off the vouchers, there was a bill for our workers' comp for the first payment, 707,883.13, which you guys didn't get to sign off on, but it's due by March 3rd. So I would like to add that to the vouchers to be paid that were up at the town hall, if possible.
And that's one that, it's, our, our amount is set every quarter, is it quarterly, we pay that?
This is a quarterly, yeah.
Yes, and that workers' comp, we signed up for two years at the same rate. So that doesn't, that's been the same thing we've paid up to now. So do you need us to authorize that?
Just when we make the motion to pay the bills, just add on the workers' comp bill.
Make a motion, we pay the bills that you're in the report there, and add the 783,000 for workers' compensation.
I'll second it.
Sheila seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
And Nikki, that'll be on the And Nikki, that'll be on the abstract, so you'll know what the exact amounts were when it comes through. Year to date spending, I'd like to say we've had a lot of spending, but as you know, all of those bills that we went through last month, except for the retirement, were on the last year's budget. Year to date spending, not really anything to talk about. I did have one sheet that I sent you on the reports this morning, and it was a transfer sheet. For the highway. As you may recall, we had a deer run in with one of our trucks. And we did receive our insurance recovery of just about $6,330. So we need to appropriate that. And I mentioned earlier that we needed to move some money from the machinery. Into the machinery equipment. And that was the $6,000 to cover the plow equipment on the new heavy pickup truck. And that would be moving from snow plowing contractual. And the other little one was, Tom does his best job to estimate how many, how much taxes are coming in for the K VAC budget. And I missed it by $5.38. So they gave us $5.38 more. So we need to put that in so we can pay K VAC all of their tax money. We need a motion to make those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the highway. Fund and special district fund transfers that Tom submitted.
I second it. Judy seconded and discussed. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I think that's all, that's all I had on my list, and I think I'm at the end here.
Did you want to mention anything about the savings you came up with on the highway? You should get, you should get kudos for that.
So it just so happens, the last time when we had signed the bills and we were, and I was writing the checks for him. My propane delivery showed up and I, the guy handed me the ticket and I said, gee, I wonder how, how I'm doing compared to the town of Pompey and. Pompey was paying $3 and some, something per gallon and my bill was about a dollar 28, so per gallon. So I talked to Renee and I talked to Tom and Caitlin and I said, hey, when was the last time we looked at this? Looks like the last time we put out the bid was probably four or five years ago when we bought the. The above ground propane tank of our own was last time we looked at it. And since then, our, the state contract has changed and. We've changed over now to a company called Farrell Gas, and you guys are now in the same range price.
Right.
Paying, so over the course of the year, that's, it's going to be a pretty good chunk of money we're saving there.
Thanks, Tom. It's great.
Good job, Tom.
Yeah.
Well, thank, thank the gas guy for showing up the same time paying bills here.
Okay, I think you are done. Thank you, Tom.
I'm going to go back on the mute in case it gets noisy here.
Okay. Nikki?
Yes, tax season's been crazy, but it's going very well. We've collected over $6.7 million right now, and we officially paid the town off. So we're excited about that. We're still operating by appointment only. So if you have to come up to the town for any reason, whether it's a marriage license or a passport, we're still asking you to call to make an appointment. Speaking of passports, that's the next thing on my agenda. I do have a request for the board. The current passport and camera we're using is between 15 and 20 years old. I'm having some issues with my photos, so I ordered new ink cartridges and. We've adjusted the settings and we are still having issues with the clarity of the pictures. In the last two months, we've had a passport, a couple of passports sent back numerous times for the clarity of the photo by the US Department of State. So at this point, I had a couple of residents and this weekend, they came in on a Saturday and I told them ahead of time, you have to. Go to a different town, whether it's Manlius or Lafayette, you know, get your picture from CVS or Walgreens and I could. Finish completing their application, but my camera's not, the photos are not being accepted by the US Department of State at this point. So I did some research. I reached out to all of the other Onondaga County clerks and I asked them, there's only a small handful that still do passport pictures. A lot of that is because there is a Walgreens or a CVS, you know, close by. The couple that don't have anything close by, I had asked them what passport systems they're using. And they're using a fast ID system, which is the camera and the printer. So they gave me their representative, I called their rep and I discovered the system costs over $1,600. Which I think is insane, insanely expensive. So then I reached out to Dan Bender and he did some digging around and he found a passport photo printer system on Amazon. That includes everything. It's the camera, the printer, it's got the USB cord, an SD card. It literally has everything, including free shipping for $550. But just for reference, I went back the last five years and there had been 233 photos issued. At $10 apiece, that's a profit of 2330 to the town. So I believe that this passport camera and printer, if I had that to utilize, I would have it paid off in less than two years.
That was the reason I initially bought the camera when I was town clerk. It's a service to the residents. They can come right in and get that picture taken. And I know it's more than paid for itself.
Yeah.
So I make a motion.
Feel bad.
That.
I second it.
Do you want, you know what it is, a CFS product?
Again, I just want to check with Tom, we got money?
Yeah, as we discussed earlier, we have the surplus that I'm recommending we put in towards the equipment and also. We put in a fairly large number towards the windows and the quotes Renee's have been, Renee has been getting are much smaller than that. So. We can definitely afford the, the $700 for this camera system.
$549.95.
$549.95 with free shipping.
Nikki, how much film or the paper for the pictures? Does that come with enough or do you need to order?
I probably need to order, I think it came with one box, so I would have to order that as well.
Okay, so we have money and. We have need and we have a service we want to provide in a town that doesn't have a Walgreens to go get photos or. The post office doesn't do them in our town. So do I, did you make a motion, Ann?
I did make a motion.
Okay.
Nice, second it.
Judy seconded, any other?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If everyone had the chance to review the January 4th organizational and regular meeting minutes, I'm looking for a motion to accept those.
Make a motion to accept the January 4th and the January 19, 21 minutes is accepted.
I guess I'm going to go with Ann seconded it.
Yes.
Did everybody look at the, the 19th? Well, that was our special hearing. Okay. Favor of accepting?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Aye.
I believe the last thing I had is that John Shaheen, a member of our planning board, had reached out to me. He wanted authorization to attend the 2021. Virtual Association of Towns Conference, which is February 14 through the 17th. And it costs $100. I know he really wanted to go to that as well.
Was that, I thought it was Dave Tessier that wanted that. Was that a different thing?
Yeah, it wasn't me, Nikki.
It wasn't John. Okay, I have your name written down. I don't know if Dave wanted me to reach out to you too, maybe?
Make a motion, we allowed $100 for Dave Tessier to turn the virtual association to town conference meetings.
Second.
Ann seconded it. Um, we don't have money in our. Conference, we zeroed that out this year, just figuring we weren't going to be going anywhere.
We did, but we also have under each one of the departments a contractual line. Maybe he won't get any office supplies.
Yes.
And we also include a little bit of training. I think it was $50 per. Member in those accounts if, if they want to have the county training. So I think you can find it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thanks, Nick.
Tim? Do you want to give us a little, a brief little summary of this required, required health emergency plan?
Yes, I forwarded to the board last week, the draft of a proposed plan. Governor Cuomo has required us now to develop a plan for situations like we found ourselves in last March. When we had closed down the office because of a. Because of COVID at that time, but this would be for any. Anything that came up where there would be, our staff would have. Would, would not be coming into the office or we would have to determine who comes into the office, what positions are essential. And how we would. Manage the office in a. In a COVID type situation. So all the towns are preparing these plans. I have used, I worked with Towne Salina on their plan and. We've kind of modified it for the town of Pompey because it doesn't have to be as complicated because they have, they have more employees that they have to deal with. So I have, most of it is, is boilerplate having to do with. The various processes that CDC requires you to go through. We have to have this plan adopted by April 1st. But we need to provide it to the union by this week for them to look at and to. Offer whatever input they might have on it. So. So we have some time, I just wanted to get this board to look at it. Authorized Renee to send it to the union for, in draft form as it is, and they can. Provide whatever input they want. And really, there's no, I, I'm not looking for a motion tonight from anybody. Just review it. This is the law. We have to have it in place. I think we've got a good head start on it. And if anybody has any questions about it specifically, I'm here to answer them.
It's awfully lengthy.
Imagine that.
You're not paying by the page.
No, I, I didn't even mean it that way. It's just, I feel like for our town.
Yeah.
There's not in here that doesn't seem to apply because we don't have. Like staffed departments. We have one person who is, is the department.
Right.
So. A lot.
Yeah, like I said, most of it is, is really related to. How are we going to operate the office? How are we going to close down the office? How are we going to notify people? How are we going to clean the office? Most of it has to do with those types of things and that's kind of boilerplate. You really need to focus on the employees and. We, we know, we know how we will do it because we've already done it. So we, we just kind of have to quantify what we've already done and put it in there and. And we'll adopt it, put it on the shelf and hopefully we won't have any more.
No more to have to deal with. Nikki, I would ask you and Tom Purcell, who's not on this call, but. To look at pages 12 and 13 because it requires us to include the vendors. I hope we're not, we're not like, like. Like committed to having to use just those vendors, but they require us to. I don't have a clue who we use for PPE or cleaning or sanitizing, and those are three different categories. So.
We use several vendors for all of those things, so.
Yes.
All we have to do is list them. We're not, we're not, we're not, we can always add to it or we can subtract from it.
Okay. And I do have a couple of.
You're freezing, Renee.
I had mentioned to her earlier today that the website is wrong in there.
Yeah.
We need to get corrected.
Hopefully we'll get Renee back. I'll text her to make sure she knows. She's frozen.
She does.
She knows, okay. Does anybody else have any questions about that, the plan?
No.
No.
Be straightforward.
Yeah, we were, we were, it's good that we were able to take advantage of work other people are doing on these plans.
Tim, is there anything you need from me on it? Because I did not receive a copy of it.
You didn't. I'll make sure you get a copy of it tomorrow. But I don't think so.
Okay.
Look for it, like the vendors, we need to list our vendors. And those types of things. So you'll know that.
Yeah, I can probably get those pretty quick for you.
Okay.
Because she's trying to get on and she can't.
Are you guys waiting for me?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the second time it's dropped me. I don't know what's going on.
So I don't think anybody else has any questions, Renee, about the.
Perfect.
Plan. They just have to look at it and determine. Whether there's specific details.
It was such interesting reading, Tim. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure.
And then if you just want to mention, because I think it's very kind of you to offer to do this, because I asked. About the training for the boards.
Yeah. I do it often, so it's not a big deal. I, I'm going to provide training for the planning board and the zoning board of deals. So that they get their four credits in for this year. So Tom, whatever $50 we had set aside for them, we won't have to spend it. So. There you go. There's your $100 for David Tessier.
That makes sense. I'm very happy.
Thanks, Tom.
And hopefully we can combine the boards on a night when they don't, like maybe zoning board appeals doesn't have a.
Yeah, have cases. We'll, we'll just do it. We can do it by Zoom. We can, there, I'm going to try to do either two hours every six months or. An hour every quarter. In fact, my son is out there. He's doing training right now for the zoning board in Salina, so.
Okay, well, thank you. And it, it's great to be able to offer that to them. And it actually might get some of those members that don't get their training done. To get trained. So, thank you. Bob Rodriguez, you have been sitting quietly.
That's how I am. Months ago, I provided a quote to get our fire alarm system up and running. You and I and the guy.
Yep.
Pulled it on and approved.
Yep, and I have actually really good news on that too, because the J cap grant actually is going to cover this cost. So it will not come out of our equipment line. That's one of the things that they have agreed to pay for. So. We have to spend the money, prove that we spent it, and then they'll reimburse. So are you looking for us to approve that expense?
Yes, I am. And then I would need to, I gave you the copy of the contract. You'd have to sign that and then we can get.
I've got it here somewhere and.
I'm working on this.
So I would make a motion that we authorize. Funds to be available for the purchase of the fire alarm system as outlined in the quote that Bob has provided to us. as outlined in the quote that Bob has provided to us. And there is a yearly fee in there, Carl, I think, for buying it above $500 or something dollars, but that we would also incur. But I would also ask that Bob take the lead on reaching out to the vendor and making this happen.
Question along that line, what about the DFib machine? Has that been updated lately?
Let's get this motion done, hold that for a second. Let's, all those in favor of this purchase?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The DFib, I remember there was some, there was a part that, correct? Something, oh, Sheila, wait.
I sent a while back to Debbie what needed to be replaced, and I'm pretty sure she ordered, I don't, I don't know if it was for the actual DFib machine.
Why don't you, will you resend that, Sheila, if you can find it?
Yeah, I sent it to Debbie a while ago in the
Okay.
Town clerk's office.
Yeah.
I think she took care of it. So, maybe we'll just ask.
Oh, well, maybe we just need to double check with.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure she took care of it.
Okay. Nikki, can you check on that with Debbie? Make sure it was done, because if not, we definitely need to. Bob, are you thinking it was, or it was not, or you're just asking?
I'm asking, I know it's been sitting idle there, I will check it tomorrow morning when I go in.
Okay, okay.
Nikki, you get a.
I think it was the pads that needed to be ordered.
Nikki, do you get a message every month? I used to get a message, and I'd have to go in there and make sure there was.
Are you talking about the AED, it's really choppy on my end.
Yeah, the AED.
I check the AED every month, I file a report online for it.
Tim, do you remember if a bill came for pads?
I don't remember, it's Zoll, I think, was the company, or something like that.
That's who we used to, but I don't know if they founded.
I don't, I don't remember anything specifically coming through for pads on that machine.
I don't think we needed pads, I think it was batteries that were bad, it was something.
That we needed, they were for infants.
Yep.
Oh.
Well, I can resend, but I did send it to Debbie. It was, I think we talked about this at a meeting, so back about four months, I sent it to her.
We did.
But we can resend, I can just find the email.
Yeah, resend it, I, I just texted Debbie, and she said that Sheila had asked me for a photo of the connector, and that was it, and she said she was ordering it.
I.
Okay, well, there's some miscommunication here, let's just make sure that we get it ordered, and yeah, we'll be good. I'm glad you brought it up, Bob, because it doesn't sound like it, it, it happened.
I don't see any bills that obviously look like they're from an odd company like that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I can't order it, I don't have a credit card.
Right, you wouldn't be allowed to. Yes, and that's something Tom and I, I'm going to pull Tom out of his comfort zone again for this year. The credit card conversation is coming, Tom.
Okay, better find a good policy before you start it.
I'll put that on my list of priorities. It's not up there. And Bob, you said, you've mentioned to me you have fire inspections to do, is it a good time of year to get them done?
Forty-eight of them, and I.
Forty-eight.
We'll start working on them next week.
Okay, sounds good.
I've got a 44-page 1203 report that I'm trying to get into Albany, that's supposed to be in.
For last year?
Yeah, for the 2020.
Okay, if I sound like I'm hurrying, it's, it's because I'm now nervous that I'm going to get.
Nope, that's fine, it's been slow so far with permits, thank goodness.
But yeah, that's what I figured.
Everything's going good.
Okay, let's move on to item, agenda item 13, which is, we still have some positions to fill, and I know that Judy brought this up last month, so I'd like to turn the floor over to you, Judy.
Okay, I would like to nominate Alma Hartnett. She has lived in Pompe for 51 years, she worked at Fabius Pompe School for 29 years, retired in 2016 from the district office, was clerk for school board for 10 years. She is very active in the Fabius Outreach Board. She volunteers for the Food Pantry in Fabius and Del Pla Falls, and I think she would make an excellent candidate for the Ethics Board.
Second it. Did you second it, Ann?
I did, Alma's great.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I don't know if I shared this with the board, within the packet I sent you, but I did get a resignation email for one of our Board of Assess, our newly appointed last year Board of Assessment Review, Karen Whalen. And it reads that, "I am writing this to resign from the Town of Pompe Board of Assessment Review. I feel there could possibly be a conflict of interest, being a real estate professional, serving the town of Pompe." Thank you. So, I'm going to share this with Nikki, I think I need, you need to have the resignation. Do I need, do I, we need to make a motion to accept it?
We always did in the past.
We always did in the past.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept her resignation. The resignation? Yes, of Karen Whalen.
From the Board of Assessment Review.
Yeah. With the Board of. I would second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And on that same note, noting Karen, I approached her this year about the vacancy left on the planning board from the resignation of, I believe it was Bob Newfeng, at the end of 2019. We never filled that vacancy last year. So, she was definitely very, she's very interested in that, and I just wanted to give you a little bio on her. She lives on Bluegrass Boulevard, and she's been there for 23 years, she has three daughters. The oldest is at college, the youngest is a senior at Fabius Pompe. Over the years, she's been very involved with school and community activities. She feels we have an amazing community, she's currently a full-time associate real estate broker with Keller Williams Realty. Graduated from Clarkson University with a degree in civil engineering, and had been a civil engineer up until three years ago, when she decided to switch careers and went into real estate. And so, for the last three years, she sold over 60 homes and properties in the central New York area. And she has, she fills with her technical engineering background together with her real estate experience, she would be an asset to the town planning board. So, I would like to make a motion to appoint Karen Whalen to fill the vacancy on the planning board, which I, the term of which I think ends in 2022. So, it's a.
Second it.
Carl seconded it, any discussion?
No.
I'd just say that I've shared this, not this, with Sue Smith, so she's aware of the candidate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And we thought we had a candidate to replace Karen's vacancy on the Board of Assessment Review, but we don't, so we.
Didn't work out at the last minute.
Yeah, so we'll work on that, and we still have one more position on the Ethics Board, but we're getting there. So, my report. The swim program. I think that we should, in light of the, the monies that we've seen come in that we didn't expect to get last year, perhaps revisit or have another conversation about registration for town residents.
I'd make a motion that all town residents be, no fees charged this year in light of our finding our rainbow and our windfall and our gold mine here, that with all the, everything that came up by time.
Okay, does, anybody want a second? I was hoping we would discuss it first, Carl. Yeah. I'm just not sure that we have a consensus on this, I think there's some split on the. But I just want to say that there was a comment made last month that really struck close to my heart, because I care very much about child safety, that's been my whole career, that this really disadvantages if we start charging the low income, the kids with, you know, that don't have income. So, we've started to explore options here, one of which was looking at the Fabius Pompe Outreach as a, as a source for setting up a scholarship fund, so that kids could, if they could not afford it, we could use them as a, to administer a fund for that purpose. In the meantime, I have to say, I also learned, and I did not know this, that Lafayette and Fabius both offer, or both pay for, the town governments pay for their students, their, their kids to participate in our program. For some reason, that's, that, that never registered with me, that their towns were picking up the costs. So, and it is more, the 75, they pay $75 a student, or a student, a child. And what was recommended, and it's per child, so if you have two children, it would be $150, whereas the registration scale we had set up was 40, 30, 20, and after that, 100, a total of 100, if you have four children or more. But I know there's not, everybody's not in agreement on this. I, I had floated the idea of, of a suggested fee, that could afford it, would register and pay that, and I know that there are people that are willing to do that. I know there are people that are willing to pay a registration fee. What I don't want to do is exclude the children that, whose parents would really struggle to pay.
So, when Renee told me that today, my first thought was, if that's the case, and the other towns are paying for the student, or the children of the families, could we approach the other towns and say, let's split this cost between all the towns?
The cost of the whole program?
Yes.
Versus just what they pay for each student?
Yes, there's a reason why every single town is not doing this. So, maybe just split the cost between the three towns equally, and maybe that would work for everybody all the way around.
We could send Tom Chartrain as our ambassador of sense, to us, the other two towns, and I'm so afraid I'm going to lose my connection again, okay, there's back.
That wouldn't happen this year, because they, you know, they, they've established their budget just like we have. They budgeted for their average number of students that they had the last couple of years at $75. They didn't budget for, you know, their number of students against a $30,000 budget.
But it's not something in the future we couldn't discuss, so.
Right.
Well, I just think in light of the fact that we do have the money, I mean, there's, there's, there's several ways we could go with this. We could go back to not charging anything, or we could request a suggested fee for people that can afford to pay, and those that can't don't pay. Or we do, we leave it as it is, or, and we can explore other options with the towns that do participate. Carl, you were trying to say something.
Years and years ago, there were no fees, way back, for the swim program. At one time, we didn't have fees.
Yeah, I, I think that the cost of the pool alone is what, $7,000?
Seventy-four hundred or something.
And then, we not only pay for the hiring instructor and the water safety instructors, but we also pick up the costs of their certification, so they can be, it's hard now to get trained people. I think at the day, I used to be a lifeguard. People loved those jobs in my time, but, but I think they're harder, it's harder to get people that are qualified to do them now. So, I, I get why we, there's a lot of costs involved with this. We pay somebody to coordinate, run the program, and we pay somebody to be the monitor or whatever from the college. So, it adds up. And I don't know what the answer is, I just know that that hit a nerve with me. It was, I'm, I'm sensitive to underprivileged kids not getting the same advantages as kids that can afford it, so.
Yeah, me too.
Throwing it out, back out to think about it. And the program hasn't started yet, so we have maybe another month or so. We usually try and roll it out right after Easter, so that only is early April, so we would need to think about it. But I, we don't need to decide tonight, but if, if somebody wants to second Carl's motion, we can vote on it, or.
If, if no one's in favor of it, I'll withdraw the motion.
Renee, don't, isn't there, didn't Tom say there's $20,000 from last year's swim program?
Right.
Being rolled over?
He did.
So, you're only coming up with $10,000 in reality.
Right, which is why I'm thinking, I mean, we did not know when we considered this, and quite honestly, at the January meeting when we set the fees, I think we knew the AIM money, or the mortgage tax money had come in, but I had forgotten about it that night. That maybe would have made us all pause at that point. But we didn't have these numbers that Tom just gave us until now. And there's, and if, I mean, if it's, if it's $10,000 out of that amount to, but you know, I, I like the idea of a suggestive fee, because that way, people pay if they, they want to. There's no forcing anybody to pay. I think, I was talking to Sheila today about it, I think there are people that are willing to pay, you know, for the, the privilege of getting swimming lessons for their kids at a very, very, very.
Reasonable rate, right.
Cost, yeah, so.
I think if, if this year, if we didn't think the money was going to be there, and that's, that was a lot of why we made the decision. If we can put the money there, maybe this year, we put the money there, and then next year, we reach out to the other two towns to say, hey, let's split this.
Let's renegotiate it.
Yeah, I mean, it's all on Pompe, you know.
To run the program, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
So, let's try to share the responsibility with Lafayette and Fabius, and if other towns want to get in on it, then everybody shares a cost. I don't know, you know, we'd have to look into it more.
The other towns don't have the number of students all that Pompe does.
That's true. If, if we didn't proportionate, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be picking up the same.
Divvy up three towns and say an equal amount, it doesn't represent the population.
How do we know now what our numbers are? We don't even know what the town numbers are in Pompe right now, so.
We only know what they were in 2019.
Correct.
And the program was full, and I recall Rose saying at a meeting, when she did her final report, they had a waitlist, that there were more kids that wanted to participate than they had room for, for the two sessions that they run.
For Pompe alone?
For the all, no.
For the whole thing? Okay.
Yeah, so, it's popular for a reason, because you can't swim lessons anywhere.
It's come a long ways from the days at the Pompe Club, and the kids were shivering at 8 o'clock in the morning.
Oh, I know.
And they'd be shivering.
Writer.
I'm not opposed to this year, if Tom Chartrain feels that we're going to be okay financially, and then next year, trying to take the time, Renee, to negotiate possibly, you know.
Okay.
So, the mix is pretty, pretty skewed here, because there's about 15 to 20 from Fabius, and maybe a few more from Lafayette. The total program holds 300 people, of the rest of those, about 150 are Pompe residents, and the balance are people from outside of any of those three municipalities. And those people pay at the higher rates. There's people from Cas, Manlius, I've seen checks as far away as Canostota.
Wow. So, we, we cover about half of the total?
Yeah, about half, I'd say a little bit over half of Pompe residents.
So, what do we want to do for this year? Because we will, we can look at this again, we can look at this further, as far as how we would maybe split the costs differently going forward. But do we want to consider no fees for Pompe people? Do we want to consider suggested fees, but for those that want to pay in, but you don't have to, and see what, how that works, or what?
Combination of both, no. Combination of both, no fees and then a suggested fee for anyone who wants to make the contribution.
Okay, and we'll leave the suggested fees, if, just, I'm just throwing this out there, as the numbers that we set for what we were going to charge town residents, so forty, thirty, twenty?
Yes, hundred.
Good idea. No more than, okay. So Carl, you want to make your motion again?
Yeah, I make a motion that this year's swim fees be base free for the Pompey students. And along with that, an addendum that suggested fees be paid for people that want to, for their child enrolled.
I'll second it.
Sheila seconds it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. My heart feels better. I struggled with that since the last time we addressed it.
I know, good idea.
We can skip the IT purchase because we're not ready on the town server, and I'll just tell you guys that I dropped my supervisor's laptop. And on its side, well, I didn't drop it, it slid off my desk, here, right here at my house. And it dislodged all of the little components inside of it, so. So I had to purchase a new one, but I got a deal from Dan Bender on a refurbished or used one for four hundred and fifty dollars. So he's already and got me back on, in business. He met me at Destiny halfway from Baldwinsville, so I, he could try and salvage my computer last Friday. But he said he was able to save my files, which was what I cared about, but the computer was shot.
Well, the computer was antiquated anyway, so.
It was on its way out, according to Tom, so, but I just wanted you to know, I did, I did drop it.
It was an accident.
But I now have, which I didn't get when I got the computer, I now have a bag to put it in. So it should be much safer. So I sent you all the letter of agreement from Veronica. It's, it basically just states what she had put in her budget proposal at budget time, but it's in a letter format for us to engage her services for this year. So I would need authorization to sign that.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Sheila seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I will sign that, and I will give it to Nikki. We can skip ECC, just because of the latest of the hour. I was going to update you on their meeting, which was really very, very.
Interesting.
Yeah, it was, thank you, it was really, yeah. It, I feel like it's, it's a, it's a group, it's nine people that are really reinvigorated to really work for the town and, and do, there's projects, and I, I'll bring you up to speed on it next time. I got today Nikki's presses, I think, the Manlius fire protection agreement. Tim, you probably are familiar with this, I would think, but I would like to get this signed, subject to your review and approval, if we could get author, if I could get authorization. Can we do it that way?
What is it, Renee?
It's the twenty twenty-one fire protection agreement between us and the Manlius Fire Department. Have you seen this before? You probably saw it last year, but I, maybe.
Yeah. Yes, you can, you can authorize the signature subject to legal review.
Okay. So I would move to, well, can somebody authorize? Can I move it? Did I authorize to sign this upon Tim's review and approval?
Second it.
Carl seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay.
Let me take a look at it.
Okay, I'll send it to you. I mentioned at the beginning that we did get, I had just asked Judge Trent, or Judge Omen today, Judge Trent. It is late. What was going on with the J Cap grant? He'd hear anything, and he hadn't. And then I said, would you mind following up? He said, no problem, went in his office, and there was an email from the state that awarded us only part, part of what we asked for, which was disappointing, but I'll take it. It was, we, we got six thousand three hundred and eight dollars. We applied for this virtually on the last day, if I recall correctly. So I don't know where the money was at that point. I think it's pretty first come, first served, so we're not going to do that this year. But we got, the money that we got was towards the fire alarm system, so, and it more than covers it, it's one thousand three hundred and eight dollars. And we also got five thousand dollars to upgrade our audio and public address system in. So we are going, I've already talked to Dan Bender to put together a proposal for how we can improve Wi-Fi, forget about power, or PowerPoint projector, like put some TV monitors there, so we can all see and be seen, and it'll, and it'll be good for the, the court, and it'll, so Dan's, Dan's already on it, and he knows what we've got. Hopefully, we already had a discussion, he and Veronica and I, about this, so we were already on it, but hoping we would get money. Luckily, that's one of the things we got. Carl, I'm thinking you might want to make a motion for us to hire the painter to do the ceiling in the town hall, because I think we have money to cover that.
Okay.
I forget his name, Winslow something?
Yeah, Winslow Painting, I, it was an even two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah. I make a motion, Winslow Painting be awarded the contract for two thousand dollars to paint the entranceway to the town hall. Up to the cell tower.
And, and seconded it. And Tom, you're nodding, because I know we talked about with the way these, this money, we have money freed up now to be able to do that, but. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Sorry, there's a couple of things on here that I didn't, that came in last minute, so they're not even, they're not, they're scribbled on my. I had a conversation today with Dave Knapp about several things. I just want to update the board. The speed readers, the digital speed readers, they're coming. We've, we've sent them their, our request. He's sending me an agreement that I have to sign for them. It's probably, we probably won't get them put up until the spring, and it's just as well, because I'll probably get hit by the falls if we tried right now, right? So we're, but those are coming. Different information about who's responsible for putting up the forty-five mile per hour speed zone signs that will go up on Sweet Road in the area of coming Amlet through to Pratt Falls Road. According to Dave, the county will definitely be the one taking care of it. I had been told it was going to be on the town to do that.
Ever.
Like what's on a town road, so why are we, so, but he said that will probably, again, given priorities right now, they're short-staffed with plowing, that those signs probably won't go up until the weather breaks, if they get a thaw or whatever. I also am pushing him to please, please, please schedule an informational session on Farm Day, so the community can have an opportunity to hear about it and ask questions. And he is going to, he tells me he will, he's on that. He knows that we're like, it's now February. So we should move on that to put together a meeting. I told him it's really not the town's meeting to hold, it's the, the events and the county. So he's working with them to make that, have that come together. He's also given me the name of the person in the purchasing department, who is now going to hear from me on a regular basis, because they can do RFP work for us for free. And we have projects coming up, whether it's drainage in the preserve, or the salt barn roof, or what else? Whatever else we need. So I've got that name and number. And last but not least, and that is the next thing on the agenda, the special event permit. We've, I've got the group. It took me till today, actually, to firm up the last member of the group. But suffice it to say that it's a six-person group that is going, and, and what I intend to do is pull through all of the, I've started it already, but look through all the mass gatherings, mass assemblies, special event, whatever you want to call it, local laws that I've come up with, pull the ones that are appropriate for a town like ours, because there's some that just aren't going to fit, like Saratoga or the Hamptons. They're just not, we're not those communities. So, and then I'm going to share those with the group as homework, and then we will virtually meet to try and find some common ground on what would work in our town. The committee of our county legislator, myself, two people that will represent differing views on neighbor concerns. And then two people that will represent differing perspectives of farming, both from a agribusiness, agritourism perspective, and also from a more traditional farm business perspective. So the farm people are Dan Palladino for agritourism, and Chris Larkin for farm business, and then Dan McClung and Mary Beth Pizarros. So I really thank those people for stepping up and being willing to be part of a discussion to figure it out. Oh, Carl, did it lose you?
Yeah, I had, give them our battery.
Yeah, well, it's because it's such a long meeting. So by next month, I hope to be able to report on what, what the group, that the group has met and what we're doing going forward. Does anybody have any questions on that? I don't, I don't mean to run through this. I just really, I'm trying to update every, everybody, including the public. Cell tower inventory, I got a call. I was up there today, meeting with, with other people that were on site doing work. But it was very, very fruitful to discuss with, I met an engineer for one of the towers, and he gave me a lot of really good information, and he gave me his card, and the ECC is on this. Tim, I don't know if you've had time to draft anything as far as a letter out to.
It's been drafted, it's got to go out.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send it to you tomorrow to.
Okay. So our plan is, after the ECC, while, when the ECC met, Stan Gorman is on that group, is on that commission, and he has agreed to step up and sort of spearhead the movement, as he has a very strong interest. He was originally part of, the part of the original group that looked at this. And once we get the inventory, once we get some responses from the companies, we can start inventorying what we have. The one thing I learned today from the engineer I spoke with, to, with one of the towers, is that most cell tower owners these days do not own their towers anymore. They have sold them to basically property management companies that now, and they lease them back to the original owners who use them. So that should make for some interesting. Yeah, we'll see what the, what we get back from these companies. I don't know, it, it's very, I don't, I don't understand the whole thing exactly, but suffice it to say, it's not as clear as it, as there's a cell tower and somebody owns it. And I'm not sure how these things get sold, and, and we'll have to look, it's all going to be looked into, is the bottom line. So, but the, the more we dig, the deeper the hole gets, because it's, it's almost seems like bottomless. And all I'll say about health insurance is it's a work in progress, because it is complicated. But we are looking into, yeah, Tom, it is complicated. It is, it is trying to, trying to ensure that what we are looking at, or what we're getting a proposal on, is, covers the same, has the same type of coverage as what we currently have. Like walking through a minefield, it's really, really difficult. And we're getting, we get numbers, but we're not sure what they mean, and we get out, and, and the out-of-pocket costs factor in. So we also now that the highway is, is unionized, significant change in health insurance has to be, you know, with their approval. So we have, it's not easy, but we are looking at it. So that's what I've been doing for the month. And I, if there's anybody left on this call, and I, it looks like there might be some, if there's anybody that wants, if we have public comment, we could, Veronica, I could turn it back over to you to see what, if anything, the public has to say at this point.
Yeah, just a comment here about the swim program.
You're welcome. You got, tell them you got to me.
Someone likes the suggested fee approach, Richard Moseson and James Lewis, number four. Thank you for revisiting the swim program. The lives that the program saves will never be known, because they learned how to swim. Every kid loves and is attracted to water. We have many pond streams and other waters in the town. A life skill of swimming is priceless. Thank you. One thought about the solar projects is, could these things end up like the tower issues years, years from now, after they are changed ownership?
I know that's a, I, I guess that's a question that could be answered, but the only thing I would say to that is that could happen if the town doesn't do what it's supposed to do, which is oversee them and inspect them, and just know that, that's why we're doing the inventory, because it hasn't been done in a really, really long time. And there's been a lack of, of attention and oversight as to what's been going on with them. So we don't know what we're going to find, and whatever we find, we will share.
And just a thank you from Stan Gorman for all the hard work.
Back at him.
And that looks like it for the moment.
Okay, hurry up, somebody.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Who said, who said that?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Judy did. Carl seconded it all in favor. Aye, opposed, carried. Thank you all. This was a long, I'm sorry, but we got a lot done. Thank you, thank you. Good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night.